So, meeting of March 24th, 2025. Members of the public are invited to attend in-person meetings in council chambers. Public access is also available by telephone. Well done. By using the call-in numbers posted on the meeting agenda, and tonight's meeting will be broadcast on the city's YouTube channel online. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Leidy?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Lucman Hiramasa?
Here.
Councilmember Burns?
Here.
Councilmember Hadameel?
Here.
Councilmember Condo?
Here.
Councilmember Roper?
Here.
Councilmember Goff? Your councilmember Noiki will be absent. Councilmember Walker?
Here.
Thank you.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Acting City Manager Loveland, are there any responses to resident inquiry?
Nothing this evening, Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda? Nope, okay. Public invited to be heard. This is an opportunity for public comment on any item not set for public hearing. Statements are limited to five minutes per speaker. Statements must be related to city business and limited to matters of community interest. City Clerk Small, has anyone signed up to speak to council tonight?
Yes, Madam Mayor, there are three individuals who signed up in advance. The first person is Jordan Stransky.
Hello, welcome. Please state your name and address or ward. You can come to the podium and turn the microphone on and provide your comments to council.
Okay, my name is Jordan Stransky and I live at 2089 East 114th Avenue. So, City Council, I'm here to express my concern regarding an incident that occurred on March 12th at approximately 11:00 PM. I was woke up by two officers banging on my door and it took me a moment to wake up and assess the situation, as the banging was pretty intense. Upon opening the door, I was informed that the officers were there to issue a citation for my cat being at large. The citation was issued despite the fact that I've been actively working to address the situation. Over the summer, two kittens began appearing around our property, and my daughter eventually befended them and we decided to provide the kittens with a safe environment. I took them, I got them spayed, neutered, vaccinated, would bring them in on the cold winter nights, all of that. Officer Lear and his partner from the North Glenn Police Department woke me and my children up stating that they were only the messenger for the animal control. Please understand, I had to work the next day and my children had school, all to issue me a ticket for a cat at large, and no rabies tag. The cats are vaccinated, but I removed their collars because frankly, I'm done claiming them. Sorry, lost my spot. So, on your website, it talks about community cats, which technically, that's what these cats are. The cats have become loving and friendly companions, they enjoy being outside, and they have no desire to remain inside. They wear collars solely for the identification in case of an emergency. However, I keep being called on repeatedly by animal control because the cats are spotted outdoors. I understand that roaming pets may be a concern, but I would like to point out that cats being outdoors is not illegal in any surrounding areas such as Thornton or Broomfield, where they are even appreciated for their role in controlling the rodent populations. Given the circumstances, I feel this citation is an unjust action against me as a responsible pet owner who has taken every effort to care for and manage these cats at my home. I'm a single mother of two, a taxpayer, and a longtime member of the Adams 12 community. I've worked there for nearly 19 years. I also hold a second job to make ends meet for my family. This ticket, which stems from a community issue that is not a concern in other neighboring areas, seems to be a misapplication of the law. When animal control contacted me last time, I was at work and my neighbor was able to retrieve the cats and bring them inside. They informed me they wanted to issue me a citation, and I told them, "Just leave it on my door, I'm at work, I don't get off until 10:00 PM at night." They told me that was not an option, hence why the officers came at 11:00 PM at night. We had two cats, and unfortunately, now we only have one of them because animal control took one. I cannot afford the fees and fines and associated with retrieving her and the fines associated with these tickets. My family would struggle with any additional financial burden. Additionally, that cat is not suited to being an indoor pet. She's always been a community cat and she thrives outside, where she feels most comfortable. I'm writing to respectfully appeal for the release of that cat who was taken to the pound and return her to her community. My daughter has been deeply upset about the situation and I'm really hoping we can find a solution that allows the cats to return to their communities where they belong. Again, I'm here to express my concern regarding the recent citation I received for a cat at large in our neighborhood, but while I fully understand the importance of maintaining order and addressing minor infractions, I believe that issuing citations for such a minor issue may be diverting resources away from more pressing public safety concerns in our community. People in North Glenn are dying from fentanyl overdoses, and this crisis is something that should be prioritized by our law enforcement, not a cat at large. The focus of our police department should be on preventing and addressing significant threats to public safety, not enforcing minor infractions like cats being outside. I also want to highlight that many community members, including myself, feel that this type of enforcement could be seen as disproportionately targeting individuals in our neighborhood. For example, a Hispanic single mother in our community, law-abiding citizen, could be unintentionally penalized by such citations which feel like a waste of resources that could be better utilized elsewhere. It's also worth noting that larger issues like uncontrolled dogs or other ongoing community concerns are often overlooked, despite being more frequent and severe. We need to focus on safety and well-being rather than on administrative issues, while important, seem small in comparison to the larger challenges we face. Therefore, I respectfully request that the City Council reevaluates the ordinance concerning cats at large and considers whether it is an appropriate use of police and animal control resources at this time. It may be more productive to focus on law enforcement efforts on reducing crime and addressing serious public health concerns in our city. Please consider revising and overturning the law regarding cats at large, as it does not seem like an effective use of taxpayer dollars or law enforcement time. I'm also going to express my growing concern regarding ongoing issues at my neighbor's property across the street, which I believe poses serious safety risks to my family and others in the neighborhood. Despite repeated attempts to address this matter, the problem persists and I'm reaching out for y'all to request immediate action. My neighbors, who are well-known in the North Glenn PD as some drug users, have continuously parked a variety of different random cars in front of their house. They have also placed campers and RVs on their property at times having people live in them. Currently, there's an exceptionally large RV there that has been stationed in front of there for well over a week, and with individuals living in it. This RV and others have been parked there for an extended period of time, and despite my multiple calls to the non-emergency line, the situation has not been addressed. This is not only a violation of neighborhood standards, but has also raised serious safety concerns for my family and others in this community. As a responsible parent, I cannot allow my children to play outside, unattended, or walk to and from school in this environment. I am particularly worried about the safety of my children given the ongoing illegal activity in the area. To further highlight the disparity in enforcement, when I parked my own camper for the weekend of cleaning, I was ticketed for living in it. However, the individuals across the street are allowed to live in an RV without consequences, which I believe is an unfair and unsafe situation for our neighborhood. I urge you to address this issue promptly, as it has created an unsafe and uncomfortable living environment for me, my family, and our neighbors. I trust the North Glenn Police Department will take the appropriate steps to investigate and resolve the matter to ensure our community remains safe and livable. I also request that you reconsider the tickets issued to me for a cat at large, as I have taken every appropriate step to care for and monitor my cats, and I feel the situation is a result of overzealous enforcement rather than a genuine public safety issue.
Thank you, ma'am. Who is next?
The next person on the list is Tom Lampo.
Welcome. Please state your name and address and provide your comments to council.
All right, I'm Tom Lampo, 3951 Jackson Way. It's good to be back in front of North Glenn, good to be back in front of you guys as well. So, I'm here to lift North Glenn up in prayer, so please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father in Jesus' precious name, we come before you tonight. We ask that you be alive in the city of North Glenn. There is no authority that approaches your perfect wisdom. You spoke life and it came into existence. Only you can create. Your hand moves and eternity is changed forever. Only you can guide time. And in your gentle ways, we experience the perfection of your love. We have so much to gain from knowing you. What incredible times we are experiencing, we are here for just this time. There are many concerns, but you tell us not to be burdened. Matthew 11:28-30 states, "Come to me, all you who are weary and burdened, and I will give you rest. Take my yoke upon you and learn from me, for I am gentle and humble in heart, and you will find rest for your souls. For my yoke is easy and my burden is light." Help us to lay down the concerns we have. Help us lay down the confusion we experience in trying to figure out what is happening all around us. These things are not for us to be burdened with. Help us to exchange all of our concerns and confusion for the yoke of your perfect love. Father, we want to lift up all the children in our community, truly a gift from you. Psalm 127:3 states, "Behold, children are a heritage from the Lord, the fruit of the womb of reward." You cherish the gift that children are. You have a perfect plan for their lives and tell them how they should live. In Colossians 3:20, you state, "Children, obey your parents in everything, for this pleases the Lord." And in Exodus 20:12, "Honor your father and your mother, that your days may be long in the land that the Lord your God is giving you." Guide their days and let them know your words, so their lives will be long and filled with peace, joy, and a deeper relationship with you. You are our God and we are your people. In Jesus' precious name, we pray. Amen. Thank you, guys. Have a nice night.
Thank you. Who is next?
The last individual on the list is Tim Long.
Welcome. Please state your name and address and provide your comments to council.
Tim Long, 10661 Utrillo Lane, Ward 4. Good evening, folks. I'm here to talk about your strategic plan shortly, to tell you that I have done numerous strategic plans in my career, in healthcare, and now in education. And we always talk about strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, but regrettably, all that I see in your wistful approach to strategic planning is, everything is just fine and dandy, things will go about just wonderful. And when the mayor gave her presentation on strategic planning the other night, of which I was in the audience, the first question out of her mouth was, "What do you like about North Glenn?" Just take it from the happy hour time and how we all look to one another. Never mind the increase in population density, that'll take care of everything with higher taxes coming in and increased property taxes. That'll help, won't it? My statement tonight really starts off with talking about coming up on the anniversary of the pedophile issue that took place one year ago. This year, however, you won't have time to make a plan, you already know about it, so you won't have to act surprised like you did last year with all your statements. You know about it. And I don't see anything happening. I did not see Jenny Wolford make her bill to take care of this issue, and it's coming up again in one year, just so you know. And I think it's only appropriate that we have the Youth Commission tonight, all the appointees coming on board. Maybe they can be of concern and take a look at what's coming up. Also, a subject that is somewhat interesting is, I get these notices in the mail, and it says, "Do you want your city of North Glenn to be a sanctuary city?" And I thought, "Why do they keep posting this? Why do they keep coming up with this?" Well, the point of it is, technically, North Glenn is a sanctuary city, going back to November 28th, 2016, when it was passed in a proclamation by City Council at that time that they are not to turn over any potential immigrant illegals to ICE, nor to do any business with ICE. And I'm certain that our legal council knows about this, the city. I'll also add that if you look at the 2019 update on the police training program in the manual in 2019, they added this very statement. So, our cops technically are not supposed to be working with ICE. In the time that we're looking at in this day and age, I should think we should be concerned about it, especially when Trenery Agua is used in Colorado for their headquarters. Budget time, yes, we wrote 227 pages of what I consider pure obfuscation. You have revenues of $71.7 million. You have expenses of $79.9 million. To me, that's a deficit delta of $8.2 million. So, you folks adopted a 2025 budget that has a loss of $8.2 million. Not only that, when you do the math the way that some people do it, not all, but many do, you are 18.5% of your sanctuary, excuse me, your backup money's rainy day fund is showing 18.5% when you are supposed to legally buy your ordinances be at 25%. And I also add that moving into the city hall is a beautiful place, don't get me wrong, but the square footage costs, you could build a hospital, hospital costs are not as much as what you pay per square footage to build this place. And you still have NERA paying a mortgage of $900,000 a year on it, which you claim is all taken care of out of capital funds. We know better. It's $11 million that NERA is assigned to to pay off the city hall. Not too many people know about that in the community. So, no weaknesses, no threats. You're fully transparent, everything is going just great. That's what I always say, don't let the truth get in the way of good story. I see some, I wouldn't use the term non-feasance, I wouldn't use malfeasance. I think it's just an absence of feasance. I'm very concerned with the city and where you people are going with their governance, and to go unchecked with anybody standing at the podium, as I have just been doing, I think is a detriment to our city cause and all the good people that live here and all the good taxpayers and wonderful people that are in North Glenn, who are unfortunately too often too silent. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that didn't get a chance to sign up that would like to speak to council at this time? No? Okay. Is there anyone on the phone who would like to speak to council? You can press *6 to unmute at this time. Okay. We're going to move into proclamations. I would love council to join me down front for the proclamation we have tonight. Okay. Good evening. I would like to welcome our guest, Chief Operating Officer and Acting CEO, Vicky Record of the Court Appointed Special Advocates, CASA, of Adams and Broomfield Counties, to accept our proclamation today. Thank you for joining us. Whereas all children are precious gifts endowed with limitless potential and deserving of the love, stability, and security that ensure not only their physical health, but also their social, emotional, and developmental well-being. And whereas too many children have their childhoods marred by fear, pain, hardship, and trauma due to the tragic consequences of abuse and neglect. In each heartbreaking instance, an innocent child is denied compassionate, loving care while being left with devastating physical, emotional, and psychological wounds. And whereas Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month is an opportunity to shed light on this serious issue and make a commitment to proactive efforts that are powered by hope, strengthened by prevention, to support families, strengthen communities, and provide a brighter future for all children. And whereas finding solutions requires input and action from all of us, prevention, healing, and justice are possible when partnerships are forged between families, child welfare and healthcare professionals, educators, community and faith-based organizations, law enforcement agencies, and governments at all levels to actively promote safe and healthy environments for all children and advocate for victims and survivors of abuse and neglect. And whereas the city of North Glenn is dedicated to supporting the advancement of equitable, responsive, and effective systems that ensure all children and families are healthy and thriving, each April, Blue Pinwheel Gardens are planted at City Hall and the Justice Center to represent hope that one day, all children will have the love, stability, and security they so rightfully deserve. Now, therefore, I, Meredith Leidy, Mayor of the City of North Glenn, Colorado, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2025 as Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month in the city of North Glenn. Let us all work together to prevent child abuse and neglect, report suspected instances of abuse and neglect, and champion the cause of protecting children and strengthening families, dated at North Glenn, Colorado, this 24th day of March 2025. So, this is for you, but I also want to give you an opportunity to say more things.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that. So, good evening to you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Council, City Council members. My name's Vicky Record, I'm the Chief Operating Officer for CASA of Adams and Broomfield Counties. And first and foremost, I want to thank you for recognizing this important month and for your ongoing commitment to the children and families in our community. At CASA, our mission is to provide volunteer advocacy and support for at-risk children and youth, empowering families to thrive. Our core program focuses on advocating for children who've experienced abuse and neglect. CASA volunteers are caring, consistent adults who stand by these children, ensuring their voices are heard in court and their best interests remain as a priority. They provide stability, encouragement, and a trusted presence in a child's life during an incredibly uncertain time. We see firsthand how child abuse and neglect affects not only the children that we serve, but also the well-being of the community. By recognizing Child Abuse Prevention Month, you're helping to raise awareness about the importance of strengthening families, supporting parents, and creating brighter futures for children here in North Glenn. Just last year, we served 31 children in North Glenn, and your support is instrumental in continuing this life-changing work. I encourage anyone listening tonight to consider becoming a CASA volunteer, we're always looking. A great way to learn more about becoming a volunteer is to attend our annual Light of Hope, which is on April 25th, celebrating our 25 years in this community. We'll share inspiring stories of advocacy and impact for these past 25 years. We're deeply grateful for your partnership and our mission, and we thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. One, two, three. Keep smiling, don't blink, don't blink. Great, thank you. This is our municipal judge oath, so I would like to invite Brian Bowen forward to be sworn in as the city of North Glenn's municipal judge. City Clerk Small will administer the oath of office to Judge Bowen.
Hello. May I just say that for 17 years in private practice, I was primarily a guardian ad litem, and I was on the board of CASA for many years, and it's a great program, they do good work. So, well done.
Yeah.
Great.
You know the drill. I'll have your repeat after me.
Yes.
After I say "I," if you will please state your full name. I?
Brian Bowen.
Do swear that I will support?
Do swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado?
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The laws of the State of Colorado?
The laws of the State of Colorado.
The North Glenn City Charter?
The North Glenn City Charter.
And the ordinances?
And the ordinances.
Of the city of North Glenn.
Of the city of North Glenn.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties?
And I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of municipal judge?
Of the office of municipal judge.
Upon which I am about to enter?
Upon which I'm about to enter.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Judge Bowen, do you have anyone with you that you'd like to introduce tonight?
Well, JJ's here.
[laughing].
I do not this evening.
Okay.
But thank you so much.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk about you for a minute, so don't go anywhere. Because it is my privilege to introduce, the Honorable Brian Bowen is North Glenn's new municipal judge. Judge Bowen is a Colorado native with a distinguished legal career spanning more than three decades. He earned his bachelor's degree in clinical psychology from the University of Northern Colorado, and he was admitted to practice law in Colorado in 1987 after earning his Juris Doctor from the Southwestern University School of Law in Los Angeles. Judge Bowen has served as an Adams County judge since 2011, where he has presided over a criminal trial docket and led the establishment of the Adams County Court for Veterans, the first accredited veterans treatment court in Colorado. He has also served as a municipal court judge in cities throughout the region. His leadership in problem-solving courts, commitment to justice, and dedication to community service have earned him numerous accolades, including being named Colorado Magistrate of the Year. Beyond the bench, Judge Bowen has contributed to legal education as an instructor, mentor, and presenter on judicial practices, criminal justice, and ethics. His passion for serving others extends to his work with various boards and committees focused on access to justice and community well-being. We are honored to welcome Judge Bowen to North Glenn, and we look forward to his leadership in our municipal court. So, please join me in congratulating Judge Bowen.
You know, that's exactly how I wrote it, so thank you.
[laughing].
I really look forward to this opportunity, and thank you for your confidence.
Thank you. All right, next up is Council Communications. We will start with Councilmember Burns.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you to everyone who came and spoke, caring loudly for our community, we love to see it. So, the other thing we have to report out is CCPP met, not last Tuesday, the Tuesday before. They continue to discuss the implementation of the Blue Envelope Program, which I think is going to be excellent, so we are moving forward with that. I believe there are some new people who just need to go through the interview process, and they were planning out their events for the summer of how they're going to attend and report out. And that's all I got. Thanks.
Okay. Councilmember Walker?
Thank you. Just want to thank Mr. Tom Lampo, Mr. Tim, and Ms. Jordan for coming to speak tonight, but I have no other communications.
Okay. Councilmember Hadameel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also wanted to thank everybody who came up and spoke. Also, congratulations to Judge Bowen. On March 17th and 21st, I led the outside agency funding meeting, which is essentially philanthropy for the city. So, we funded the Colorado Business Community for the Arts 2025 Award Luncheon at $1,000. Then we also funded the Food for Hope, Decade of Hope Birthday Bash, and also the Five Star Education Foundation, Five Star Classic, at $1,950. And yeah, I'd like to thank my friend, Jordan Stransky, she's a longtime friend of mine, grew up on my neighbor, as one of my neighbors, and yeah, she's served, working for Adams for, or Adams 12, rather, Five Star Education since we were teenagers, so I'm really proud to see her here. So, thank you, Jordan, and that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Goff?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, this is a busy time at the state legislature, so it's a busy time for people who are going to testify to committees and on proposed bills. So, most of my work this last couple of weeks was with Colorado Communities for Climate Action. On March 12th, I testified against Senate Bill 30, which was going to increase, well, the name of it was Increase was with Colorado Communities for Climate Action. On March 12th, I testified against Senate Bill 30, which was going to increase, well, the name of it was Increase Transportation Mode Choice. But they had, we were asking them to remove amendment, or make amendment to remove requirements for cities to do transportation assessments and then to penalize municipalities that don't follow what this law spelled out. So it's kind of an unfunded mandate. Then, March 13th, CC4CA Policy Committee met and just sort of talked about how every municipality or every member of CC4CA is coping with the uncertainty of federal funding. And, you know, kind of discussed about how the federal cuts are impacting their programs. Let's see. Then also, to plan, we plan to have more discussion and some education, more education on nuclear energy as a clean energy source. On March 17th, I testified for House Bill, no, I testified against House Bill 1126, which was adding new members to the Public Utilities Commission, which has got some good, I mean, there's some good reasons for doing it, but it also ends up being, costing a whole lot more money, over a million dollars to add new members. And there's a study being in progress right now that will be finished later in this year that may make better recommendations to improve membership, geographic membership on the Public Utilities Commission. Then, March 19th, I testified for Senate Bill 51 on RTD operating costs. You know, it's been a while now. I didn't take good notes, so I don't remember what that one was. And then, also on that same day, the CC4CA had their Legislative Committee. And as many of you probably know, the Joint Budget Committee is hard at work trying to figure out how to fund the operating of our state services because we are very, very short of funds. But they did, they are developing a crash prevention enterprise that is a way to fund venerable, vulnerable road users, which has been coming around, which has been discussed for a couple of years now. And so there'll be more information coming out on that. And then, 1096 is a solar permitting bill, which I did testify previously on, and they're still working on amendments. Let's see. And then, House Bill 1286, we were discussed at great length and decided we needed to amend that or request amendments for that. That is to protect workers in extreme temperatures. And we have a lot, we had a lot of members who were, had concerns about the, oh, I don't know, like the way they set the temperatures for what's considered, you know, like a dangerous temperature and whatever. Anyway, there's just lots of details on that. It was very complex, so they're still working out on that one. And then, just today, I met with, let's see, what was his name? Tyler Moore, who is a staff member for our Congressman Gabe Evans from his office. We were, we met with many representatives from Adams County, Westminster, Larimer County, and then, of course, North Glenn, to talk to Gabe Evans' office about federal funding for the projects that we have going on in our community and the benefits that we've received from that and ask him to please continue supporting those. And that's, I think that's it for me.
Thank you. Council Member Condo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank the staff and also Ed and Jen, our lobbyists, as they pulled together, as well as the Legislative Committee. Thank you for doing that, the breakfast last Friday that was attended by the Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Jody and myself. This was spending some time in our State Capitol to kind of see the gears turning downtown. And I will tell you, that being my very first experience, it was definitely an eye-opener. The best way I could describe it is it's like playing 3D chess. And then there's a little bit of posturing and Kabuki theater happening. Yeah, I see some people nodding, so I think you probably can relate to that experience. But in the end, I think it was really beneficial to meet with Jenny Wolford, our representative. So we certainly shared our concerns and wishes and desires for what we would like to see out of this legislative session. So again, I really appreciate that. We were also joined by Amanda Peterson, Casey Wiggle, and four members of our Youth Commission. And I think that was also, I hope for them, very, very beneficial. On the 20th of this month, North Metro Fire has now settled on what I would say, we extended a conditional offer to our prospective fire chief, who is Sean Slaman. He is the fire chief currently of Carson City, Nevada. And that will start the process of background checks and some other perfunctory maneuvers to make sure that we are, we have a candidate and a fire chief that we selected that has a clean record and that we have full confidence and faith in. So that process will unfold for the next couple of weeks. But we are targeting his start, barring any hiccups or anything like that, around July 15th. There'll be a two-week transitional period, and then on August 1st, he'll fully take over from Chief Remus. So I would like to thank the community. I would like to thank Chief May. I know he participated in that interview process. And I think it was extremely important for us as the board members to have that insight and perspective as we were making our decision. On Saturday, the Mayor Pro Tem, Jody, Adam, and I, we got our hands dirty. This was the High Line Canal Cleanup. And it's actually a joint activity with Thornton. I believe it's the very first time. And the way this came to fruition was actually our prior administrative assistant for the Recs Department, I think her name is Belia, is now over at Thornton. And so through that connection, we were able to kind of say, hey, can we hold hands together and have both cities involved with the cleanup activity? So we- Voice of God. Oh, my God. Okay. Anyway, great opportunity to be out there with the people and roll up our sleeves, get dirty, and pick up trash. So that was, for me, a very enjoyable experience. And then, lastly, although, I think I'm just gonna save that. I know that we did the fundraiser there for Ralston House, so I'll let somebody else talk about that. But again, most importantly, you know, I think it's so critical, just to wrap this up. If you, if you've never been to the state legislature and are wondering exactly how things are getting done, I would, I would strongly encourage you to go down there and just sit in there in the House or the Senate Chamber for an hour or two. It may be a little bit vexing and frustrating, but somehow or another, it is a managed chaos. Hopefully, work is getting done and right decisions are being made. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Council Member Roper?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will begin by piggybacking a little bit off of this. I did attend on Friday the Legislative Day at the Capitol, and I agree with Council Member Condo. It's important to go down, watch it for yourself, sit in the gallery, see which of your representatives are present, which are not, which are paying attention, which are not. It's important for you to see that in action. It was great to be able to meet with some of our representatives and be able to voice our concerns. And then, just again, to not carbon copy, but on Saturday, I did attend the Farmers High Line Canal Cleanup. And primarily, I was in Ward 4, and we had Ward 4 community members there, but we also had someone join us who said they no longer lived in the neighborhood, but they loved the neighborhood and that area so much that they wanted to come back and make sure that it was cleaned up. So I thought that was really incredible. They don't even live here, and they are still volunteering their time to make North Glenn beautiful. And I would say, from last year, we had way less trash. So I thought that was really positive, that we're doing a good job out there, so keep it up. And that is all I have for today. Thank you.
Great. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you to all that came out and spoke, and congratulations to our new judge as well. And thank you so much to Council Member Goff for all your testifying at the legislature. I was actually supposed to testify, but I've been sick and had a million appointments, so I'm so glad everybody else is really filling those roles. It's important. On, let's see, on March 12th, I attended the Business Retention and Expansion Committee Meeting. And right now, our focus is, believe it or not, on the Business Appreciation Event coming up. So our next meetings, we'll be talking a little bit about that, and mark your calendars. October 28th is the date for our Business Appreciation Event. We also talked a little bit about upcoming business walks, and on April 10th is the Business After Hours at Boondocks. So another great event to please mark your calendars to join if you can. May is Small Business Week, so keep that in mind. I'm a small business owner as well, so I'm pretty excited to be a part of that. There will be events for small businesses in North Glenn throughout the week, including educational programs, some breakfasts, and some other things like booths, and a chance to be very interactive with our business owners. So glad that is coming up as well. Not to be repetitive, but yes, breakfast under the dome. Very thankful to our Legislative Committee members that we worked pretty hard to make sure that was all in place. It was really fantastic to see our Youth Commission there as well. It was the first time they attended. And I think it was really special for them to have a chance to have that one-on-one conversation with our rep, Jenny Wolford. Thank you to her for showing up. She was the only representative that did, so it was pretty special to the kids. And they got to go out and be recognized on the House floor as well. So very, very cool. I got to have some conversations with some of them and what legislation they're getting involved in. And it's a lot. These kids are pretty, pretty fantastic. On the 22nd, yes, also got my hands dirty, as was stated. Not as much trash, but also just a public service announcement, a lot of micro trash. I found so many small pieces of plastic and bottle caps and bottles and cigarette butts on our trails off the High Line Canal. So those cigarette butts don't just go away. So please, please, please take care of that if you're gonna smoke while you're getting healthy, or whatever the case might be. Just, it was, it was quite a process. And then, the last thing I will mention, just to add on to some of what we've talked about, the federal funding freezes. I know Ralston House, which I'm on the Board of Directors, is looking at potentially about $650,000 cuts to their programming, which is a lot when you think about what they do. So that's kind of on hold and unknown right now. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna discuss a little bit of the regional work that's been happening. So the Adams County Mayors meet monthly with RTD Directors, and so we had that meeting. That is an opportunity for us to partner together, learn more about legislation that they're working on and how we can work together. I hosted a coffee with the mayor at the Carl's Farm Senior Apartments, and that was really fun because there were probably over half of the residents were new to North Glenn. And they, they had a lot of positive things to say, and they, they brought up some very valid concerns and questions. And so we'll be working with staff to figure out how to support them. But it was, it was a really lovely day. I was able to testify downtown for House Bill 251272, which is on construction defects. And so hopefully, that will pass, and that will provide the opportunity for us to sort of expand our housing product in the state and be able to have condominiums as a product that we don't have right now. And so that was something I did downtown, and that is a busy place, that is for sure. The Capitol is wild. I had a CBCA Board Meeting, so that's the Colorado Business Committee for the Arts. And we have such a great partnership with them, the North Glenn Arts and Humanities Foundation. We get a lot of resources and professional learning for our staff, and so I sit on that board. I had a mayor's community meeting on Wednesday in this very room, and I see that one of our guests that spoke at Public Comment has left, and I'm sad because I would like to address some of his concerns. The room was filled. It was so much fun. We had familiar faces, but we also had a lot of new residents that had come forward. And so I did, in fact, start with, what do you love about North Glenn? I did about a six-slide presentation on the strategic plan, a high overview, for sure. But then it was really lovely because the guests kept that conversation going for such a long time. They had so many things to celebrate about our city, and then it naturally turned to questions. Some of what Mr. Long shared was not correct, as far as some of the numbers. And he tends to do that, and that's okay. I just would like to make sure that all residents know that just because those statements were made from the podium does not make them factual. We had a very robust conversation about our City Hall and its financing. We gave a tour at the end. It was a really lovely meeting. But what I would like to say is I'd like to encourage people to keep coming out. Keep coming out to your ward meetings. We're seeing an increase in numbers across the dais. Like, people are coming to ward meetings, they're coming out to coffees, they're coming out to community meetings. They're asking really good questions. They're partnering with us to build community, and that's really what it should look like. And so, again, it was another opportunity for me to take mad notes. I have a whole bunch of notes to bring back to staff on questions and concerns that were raised so that we can follow up and make the changes necessary. So it was a great night. I also, well, I have to stop real quick. I have to congratulate our Ward 2 Council Member, Adam Nowicki. He had a new baby. So congratulations to Adam and Jody Nowicki. Yeah, so it was last Monday, we had a study session. It was on St. Patrick's Day. So his second daughter is a St. Patrick's Day baby. And so he's home with his family tonight. I, wow, this was way too fun. And if you have not made it over to the Parsons Theater Show of the, it's called the 25th Annual Putnam County Spelling Bee. It's a show not to miss. It is so cute. I did not know it was like a Broadway show. And so I learned a lot about that, but I got to be a guest speller. I made it to round three, which, they were hard work. And some of my other celebrity spellers got easy words. They gave me really hard words, but I made it to round three. And it was so much fun. But what I want to do is highlight the Family Theatre Company. So it's spelled P-H-A-M-A-L-Y. And so their mission is to be a creative home for theater artists with disabilities, to model a theatrical process for people with disabilities, and to upend conventional narratives by transforming individuals, audiences, and the world. And it was so beautiful. Please, please go. The show is still open until April 6th. And we have had a longstanding partnership with the Family Theatre Company. And one of the best things I heard so many times after the show is that they love our new theater because it is so accessible. It's accessible for guests, but it's accessible for the artists. And that is a really big deal. They've been partners since the previous Rec Center, and they could not rave enough about it. They love North Glenn, and we love them right back. Okay, I think that's all I had. Wow, thank you. All right. City Clerk Small, what do you have tonight?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do not have any reports tonight.
Okay. Acting City Manager Loveland?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Okay. City Attorney Hoffman?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I'll make it a trifecta, and nothing to report from you as well.
Fantastic. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
I will close that vote, and the consent agenda passes unanimously.
Excellent. We have a public hearing tonight, CB 2027. Will the clerk please read the title?
The Bill for an Ordinance Amending Various Sections of Chapter 11 of the North Glenn Municipal Code, the Unified Development Ordinance.
I will now open the public hearing on CB 2027. Comments are limited to five minutes per speaker. Is there anyone who would like to speak, either for or against CB 2027? Is there anyone who would like to speak, either for or against CB 2027? Is there anyone on the phone who would like to speak? You can unmute yourself by pressing star six at this time. Hearing done, I will close the public hearing. Ordinances on second reading, CB 2027, the Unified Development Ordinance Amendments. Is there a motion to approve on second reading?
Move for approval.
Director of Planning and Development, Brooks Faboda, will provide a summary of this item.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The, the presentation I'm about to do this evening is the same that we saw at the study session recently. So I'm just going to basically key on the key, our top talk on the key highlights of the presentation. I believe that we addressed all the questions from the previous study session. But if there are additional questions or something that I may have missed, please feel free to bring them up at any time. So we're here to consider CB 2027, amendment to the UDO. It was originally adopted in 2019. We've had various amendments over the years, primarily to, to address inconsistencies or things that perhaps we didn't anticipate as things evolve and change. So a lot of things tonight that you're going to see are somewhat relative to that. Also, Planning Commission voting unanimously, recommendation for approval to the City Council on this amendment on March 4th. So we have these items to cover in the presentation. I'll walk through all of them. I won't announce them here, but we'll just go through and catch them. So with that, group homes. So what we've done here is we've worked closer to align the regulations with state and federal requirements, working with the City Attorney on that. Also, we are creating a special use permit, which means that this will require for group homes to go before the Planning Commission for, for review and consideration. It will be a public hearing. We will be doing the notification to the surrounding neighborhoods. The main intention here is to provide this as an opportunity for the community to know what's happening in their area. We will be addressing group homes for the age, intellectually and development disabled, as well as persons with mental illness. Number, or the next modification is related to ADUs. This is really as part of previous council presentations and discussions to basically affirm the, the city's home rule authority over regulations that the House Bill 241152 adopted last year and that essentially that this is a matter of local, local concern. Driveway residential coverage. So this is something that we, that we as staff were troubleshooting in terms of a possibility of someone attempting to transform their front yard into a concrete parking area and further refining the definitions for driveways to manage and mitigate the possibility of somebody being able to exploit this, the language that we had in place and eliminate that possibility from happening. Next here is more for commercial properties, that if you remove a tree, you replace a tree unless it's a diseased tree, or at least if it's a tree that is considered noxious and not allowed. This here is for minimum parking. This has really, in relation to House Bill 241304. Same thing, we are asserting that the, that the legislative action taken last year is a matter of local concern and reaffirming our ability to regulate parking at a local level. Here we are also looking at something where staff has identified a troubleshooting issue to better and more equitably address parking for food and beverage services, as well as also essentially combining multiple different uses as under one use to make it easier, more uniform to establish parking requirements for similar uses that we had some gradation and distinction that we're finding really doesn't make much sense moving forward. Sign permit exemptions, this is really just a nomenclature organizational formatting correction. And here we have minor plats. This is really just trying to identify that if we're not changing the density, if we're adjusting a lot line, or if there was an error in the original plat, that we have an administrative process to address that rather than a public hearing process that effectively has no real bearing on changing the outcome of the existing lots or uses. And here we have administrative approval for certain vacation applications. This is yet again, one of these things where if there is a private easement that needs to be vacated, that it's not a public process. And so it's really trying to provide for further clarification and more optimization and efficiency of our current regulations as they relate to that. There is an appeal process that if, that can be taken to the Planning Commission by a party or, or by myself as a, as a referral. So those are the, those are the, the body of amendments. Planning Commission recommended a unanimous approval, and staff is recommending approval of second reading.
Thank you. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have one question. And yeah, I wasn't sure whether this would be the place to ask it, but it is related, someone asked it anyway. And hopefully you can direct me in the right, in the right direction. But in terms of the group homes, these are private homes. Any individuals that could be possibly registered sex offenders, just because this was also mentioned today as well. I know they would follow our local ordinance, but are these group homes as part of their, I guess, registering or whatever, required to gather that information from the residents in the home? Like, is there anything specifically laid out that as a group home or residential home, we know it's a given that you should follow our thousand-foot setback if you do have a sex offender in one of those homes?
So I, I'll actually lean on Corey here to help answer that question. Essentially, what we're trying to do with these amendments is establish a public review process for these uses as they're listed. And any other additional requirements that they may have that are not necessarily under the, the UDO, but maybe under other portions of the municipal code would also be subject to that.
Okay.
Good evening. Registration of sex offenders is a matter of state law in the sense that even if, if someone was going to be placed in a group home, regardless of the category, they would have to notify the city first when they are, when they are registering. And at that point, we will, we'll determine adherence to state law. Now, the one issue is that if it is a state placement, it is an open question whether or not at this point they would have to adhere to North Glenn's ordinances. But for all others, for example, if it is a mental health facility of some sort that is not a state-placed, unequivocally, they would have to follow North Glenn's just distance limitations. It's, it's an open question, frankly, if it is a state placement.
Great, yeah, all of that is, is understood. But I, I was just wondering if there was any specific portion when they, you know, say, we're opening a group home that says, hey, remember to check this ordinance?
The, the purpose of the group home regulations in the Planning Commission public hearing, as Mr. Faboda alluded to, is twofold. I would say it's to certainly give the neighborhood notice and have them an opportu, give them an opportunity. But it's also an opportunity for the city to assure that even as a group home, it walks and talks like a residence and is compatible with the neighborhood. And so a lot of the provisions related to group home regulations are to make sure it is, in fact, compatible. Things like having trash cans instead of a dumpster, with, you know, having the number of cars that might be parked that would make it disproportionate to what would otherwise be allowed in a residential area. So those are the kind of things that this ordinance amendment is designed to provide input and allow the city to have oversight on.
I appreciate that. And I think it's really great that we are regulating that because parking has been something that's been brought up. So thank you so much for your work on this, Director Faboda.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you so much. Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Oh, lost my own vote. Please vote.
I will close that vote, and CB 2027 on second reading passes unanimously.
Moving to resolution CR 27. Will the clerk please read the title?
A resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the Colorado Judicial Department and the City of North Glenn for the provision of a juror list.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Municipal Court Supervisor Jason Johnson is here to provide a summary of this item.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So in municipal court, one of the functions that we have is jury, jury trials. And as we get jury trials that come in or get scheduled by either the defendant or their attorney, we have to send out jury summonses to residents of North Glenn. So it's a process that we have. We had a jury trial last year. We get a lot more jury trials scheduled than we actually do have. But that process involves sending out jury summonses. So we have to get a list of potential jurors from the City of North Glenn. And so the way that we do that is we go through the state of Colorado, and we request what they call a jury wheel, which is basically a computerized list of residents in the North Glenn, in, in North Glenn that can serve on the jury. So this happens about, we do this about every two or three years. So I've been here just over three years now. So we're in that, we're in that mode of getting an updated list from the state of Colorado. So that's kind of what I'm here to do today, and I am open to any questions.
Councilmember Condo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So is this pull from the database a one-time sort of thing? Or do you do it every year because, you know, people move or change names, whatever?
Yeah, it's a great question. So we do it one time, and we do it about every two or three years. So it's just a, it's just kind of a snapshot of registered voters or, you know, it's based off state IDs, driver's license information. That's why we go through the state of Colorado for it. So it's just one time that we do it. And then that information gets old, and then we have to redo it again, which in about three years, we'll be back here to request it again.
So the number of, of juror-related cases, I'm assuming the numbers of people that we get will be sufficient to cover us over the, over this next period?
Yeah, so another part of that process, once we get that information back, we send out questionnaires to random residents of North Glenn. So it's anywhere between 500 and like 750 that we actually send out. So it's a whole, you know, we send it out via mail, so it all goes out through mail. And then they return those back, and then we kind of base off, some people aren't eligible to be a juror, some people are. We have a process that we go through with that. So it's done, and, you know, we have information back from 2022 when we first, when we, when we last did this. So we just don't want to get into sending out jury summonses for those people because that information could change. They might have moved out of North Glenn, they could have moved somewhere else. We get a lot of return mail. So it's a one-step process that we do, and then we hold that information for about three years, and then we do it all over again.
Thank you.
I see no further questions. Thank you so much. Please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
I will close that vote, and CR 27 passes unanimously.
CR 36, will the clerk please read the title?
A resolution appointing a Ward Four member to the Diversity, Inclusivity, and Social Equity Board of the City of North Glenn, Colorado.
Move for approval?
Hello, I would like to invite Ann, come on up, Ann Navaris, to come up and introduce themselves to City Council.
Hello, I didn't actually prepare anything because I didn't know what I was supposed to do.
That's okay, that's okay. Just tell us a little bit about yourself and, and why you applied for the dice board.
Okay, well, my name is Ann Navaris. And did you need my address?
No, it's okay.
My family and I moved to North Glenn in January of '21, and we just fell in love with the city immediately. We love everything about it. And both of my children are disabled. So when I saw an opportunity to speak up and be a voice for the disability community, which is what I've been doing for 13 years now, I thought it was a wonderful idea. So here I am.
Welcome, welcome. Do we have any questions from Council? Councilmember Goff?
Hi, Ann, it's good to see you in person. This is not really a question, but I also did want to point out that you volunteered in a lot of different ways for District 12, Adams-Sfizer Schools District 12. So I think we're, we're very much looking forward to working with you and your energy, and welcome.
Oh, thank you.
Is there any discussion on this item? Okay, please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Please vote.
I will close that vote, and CR 36 passes unanimously.
Thank you. CR 37, will the clerk please read the title?
A resolution appointing an at-large member to the Diversity, Inclusivity, and Social Equity Board of the City of North Glenn, Colorado.
Great. So this matter, hold on. I gotta read my speech. I have a little speech. Yes, no, thank you for jumping in, but I have a little speech before I hand it over. So this matter concerns consideration of the appointment of my daughter to the dice board. And so based on the language in section 4.57, 4.57, 4.7 of the city's Home Rule Charter, out of an abundance of caution, I am accusing myself because this could be interpreted as a matter in which I have substantial, substantial personal interest within the meaning of the charter. I would therefore ask the Mayor Protem to preside on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That makes so much sense now. I was like, why is nobody speaking up? Okay, great. Is there a motion to approve CR 37?
So moved.
Second. Thank you. I would now like to invite Madison to please move forward to introduce herself to City Council. Welcome, Maddie. Thanks for being here.
Is it on? Oh, it is. Okay, hi.
Hi.
It's good to see you.
As was mentioned, nobody really had a heads up in terms of, you know, it being a formal interview. So I'd like to open it to anyone on the dais that would like to ask you any questions or say anything. Councilmember Goff?
I'm too slow with the buttons. Welcome.
Hi.
I just wanted to say that it was a really tough decision. We had a lot of wonderful people to apply for these positions. And the, the voice that Maddie is going to bring to the diversity board is to speak for people who have had traumatic brain injuries and hidden disabilities. And so these are items that have been something that the dice board has wanted to get more involved with. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great. Are there any other questions? I would just like to say that you did a great job during your interview. I did step in for the mayor, as was mentioned, so there was no conflict. And I do think that you really are going to bring a great and diverse voice to the diversity board, as well as the other person that was just sworn in. So I'm very excited to hear there's representation in the disability world because it's needed. So thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
Okay, looks like no more questions, so please open the vote.
The vote is open.
Thank you. Please vote.
I will close that vote, and CR 37 passes unanimously with one abstention from Mayor Leidy.
Thank you very much. Okay, discussion items. The first one isn't, well, the only one. E-bike Mobility Hub Bike Library. Director of Parks, Recreation, and Culture, Amanda Peterson, is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here tonight to provide some information regarding e-bike library or mobility hub that we get to have the opportunity to install here on Green Properties. Smart Commute has been working with our city staff to implement a program here in North Glenn as well as support and encourage them to share as a means of encouraging users to bike for commuting to work, recreating, or conducting other errant activities. The proposed mobility hub includes a five charger station.
Thank you. I forgot to push the, I'm sorry. It includes a five charger units as well as two bike lockers. So those five charger units can be used for our community, by our community members to charge and securely store their own e-bikes. The two bike lockers can be utilized by our community members to rent or borrow an e-bike through that, through a smart app or a smartphone app on your phone. The e-bike library is proposed to be located on the northwest corner of Festival Lawn on an existing concrete pad. Unlike the Docless Bike Share Programs, the rental bikes cannot just be left on the trails. One, there's, there's only two of those lockers available for use at any given time. And two, they must be picked up and returned to a charging station. So that can be one here in our community, as well as in those partner communities in Thornton and Westminster. So utilizing that interconnecting trail network to access other areas in the region. The bike, rental bike riders or people utilizing their own e-bikes and using this station as a way to lock and charge their bike must abide by our existing e-bicycle rules and regulations that are already in place. So that does limit our speeds to 15 miles per hour, as well as require that bicycles stay within the designated areas, primarily the non-designated areas or playgrounds or sports fields and sport courts throughout the city. Smart Commute also has the ability to limit the speeds to 15 miles an hour so they can actually adjust those bikes so that that speed limit cannot be exceeded on the, on the rental or loaned bikes. Funding for this program comes from RTD, CDOT, and a grant from the Adams County Open Space. The city's responsibility is to provide a space to put the unit, as well as the electrical infrastructure. Smart Commute is looking at an option that would make the North Glenn unit entirely solar-powered, but that option isn't likely to come onboard. but that option isn't likely to come onboard until a little later in the year. We would hope to be able to pilot that for them and be an example of how we can power these units completely by solar energy. So staff is seeking consensus from council tonight to authorize Smart Commute to move forward with the installation of the e-bike library on the northwest corner of Festival Lawn as depicted in the image in your packet. I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have tonight.
Councilmember Condo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I think Director Peterson, you said that you could check out the bike in theory from here?
Correct.
And then ride it to, say, Westminster City Hall and check it back in?
Yes, that is correct.
So if a bunch of people do that, are there enough, is there enough space at Westy to accommodate those additional bikes that pile up over there? Or how, how does that work exactly, that hypothetical?
That's a great question. So it is a pilot program. They have a third party who's going to be operating the, the app and the bikes and is responsible for coordinating those pickups and returns for us. So there may not always be two bikes at our station that are ready to go, but somebody is going onto the app, identifying where they'd like to pick up and return the bike, and then they're coordinating those efforts.
So if we were to play this scenario forward, if two people decide to ride their bikes to Westy City Hall and leave them there, then at some point, if nobody is riding to North Glenn?
They would bring them back.
The company is going to have to step them back.
They would set them up based on how people are renting them or checking them out.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Councilmember Goff?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Director Peterson. This is a great idea. First heard about it at the Sustainability Fair. There were, we had, there was a presentation made at that. So I love the idea of the solar power, so I hope that, that we continue to make that happen. And I just want to say that I think the lockers are great. I have an e-bike and I don't always ride it to the rec center because it's too hot or something like that. So this is great to have a place that we could, you know, I could put it inside and where it'd be shaded. So I could ride it home without melting my hands off. So.
And just to, sorry for interrupting, just to clarify, so the bike chargers and bike locking units that are for the public will not be the lockers. There, it is open.
Oh.
However, the structure that would power, would be, provide solar power when we get that online would provide shade over the entire unit.
That's what I'm hoping for. So I could use my bike more.
Yes.
Thanks for the clarification and I think this is a great idea. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? This is a discussion item. We're not really voting on it, but it looks like we have three options. I had a question. I was noticing if approved, installation is planned in late March. I feel like we're in late March.
We are. They are ready to go whenever we give them a thumbs up, if we give them a thumbs up, so they can move forward.
When did we learn about this? This seems to be coming to council late.
So there's been some conversations about it with staff over the, between planning and Parks, Recreation and Culture over the last few years as they've been working on identifying a partner and units and locations as well as their funding sources. It was brought up during, discussed during the strategic planning session. So this is listed as an outcome of the 2025 strategic goals.
Okay. So I'm looking at the location and I know one of the options is to pick a different location. I just know that that's on Festival Lawn and when we have festivals, things park right there, whether it's a, I think the last thing I noticed there was the sensory truck was parked there. Because this is such an activated space, is there an alternative location?
We haven't specifically identified an alternative location. We are open to suggestions. We did meet out on the site with staff, including and have spoken with the events staff about whether they thought that space, that footprint would be, would impact events. It is adjacent to the larger pad, which is where we've typically, what we have typically used. That's where our power source is for events and festivals, for food trucks or other, other event structures.
Okay. Councilmember Burns?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You just ignited a thought because would this, could this spot be permanent with our potential civic center campus plans if we want to put the U-shaped road? That all goes away.
Uh huh.
That is my other thought from just like a forward thinking. Oh, hi, Director Sfoboda.
It would not.
Okay, thank you.
And even if that changed, the entire structure can be moved.
It can?
Yes.
Oh, that's super cool.
So it can be removed. We do have, part of the agreement would be that we, either party can terminate that agreement with 30 days' notice and the, the unit can be removed.
Well, we could just move it somewhere else though, right?
We would negotiate, we would work through that with Smart Commute, but yes, they can. It's placed on top of the existing concrete pad, so there is opportunity to relocate if we were, if it were to come to that.
Awesome. This is super cool because it's basically just city bike for e-bikes, right?
Say that one more time.
It's like a city bike situation for e-bike, like Lime?
Except it, it is not dockless.
Right, yeah.
Yes, it is a, there's, and there's a range in fees and access, so they have the ability for you to participate in what they consider to be group rides. If you've participated in a number of group rides and have some references on file, you do have the ability to access those bikes at no cost as well.
Oh, that's cool. Thank you. Councilmember Roper?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As part of the mobility hub, is the bike repair set up for all people? Like, so if people bring their bikes to the rec center, could people also use the repair area, the pump, things like that? Or is it only for users?
Nope, anyone can use the bike repair station. It'll be very similar to the one that we have at EB Raines right now.
Very cool. Thank you.
Councilmember Hermio?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm really excited to see this collaboration with Smart Commute. I work with them on the North Area Transportation Alliance, NADA, so I'm glad to see that we received a lot of grant funding too from Adams County Open Space. So it's exciting to see this come to fruition and I'm excited to support option one, installation of the bike library as proposed.
Councilmember Burns?
Sorry, another question. So, because I noticed the first mile, last mile implications in this and the proposal. So is there going to also be a station over at the end stop?
There is not currently one proposed at the end stop, however, with commuters who are utilizing the bike for the entire day. They are able to check the bike out here. There's a different rate for those commuters, so I believe it's $5.50 per day instead of a per hour rate that would be used for recreational purpose, or applied for recreational purposes. So if there's the ability to load their bike onto public transportation, they are able to then return it to the site.
Oh, I see. Okay, so you could like put it like on the front of the bus and then take it with you. Okay. The end lane, the end stop would be kind of cool though, to have that.
And I believe we can certainly share that feedback with Smart Commute about other possible locations.
Awesome, thank you. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Burns, you asked my question about the first and last mile. No, that's excellent. So I guess one other question I have, it does say that the user is responsible for any damage or whatnot, but what, what if they are stolen? I'm assuming that this company has some kind of insurance program, would be my guess.
I have not speci, I don't specifically have the answer to that question, but it is an agreement between the bike user and the, the company and Smart Commute in checking that out.
Okay, it was just a curious thought. I support, especially with the, with the clause that there's a 30-day notice that if it doesn't work out, if that location isn't working out via events or anything like that. But thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I can get on board. I just don't like the location, but it's fine. I guess we'll just see. I just worry about the activation of our event space and, and the, the future of the civic center plan. So I guess if we can move it, we can move it. So we'll see how it goes. All right.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll continue, we'll monitor how that space is being used. And like you said, as a pilot, we want to be able to monitor that and make adjustments as best fits our needs, the community needs and Smart Commute's needs as the.
I just thought of another thought because, I don't know. I'm still struggling with the location. I'm, I'm looking at the, because I do recall the first last mile in the strategic plan, but specifically this, at this location, I did not know about, but the, we, we struggle with parking. And so this seems to be in a location that might lead people to come and park in order to get the bike. So it's just another opportunity for parking spots to be taken up and we get a lot of feedback about that. So I just, I, the position is curious. I guess we'll just see how it goes. And you said it was a 30-day trial or?
It's a 30-day notification if either party would like to have it removed from the site.
Got it, okay.
So at any point, we can make contact with Smart Commute and let them know that we're having concerns.
Okay. All right, guess we'll find out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Finally, public invited to be heard. This is another opportunity for public comment. Statements are related to an item previously addressed by council during the meeting and statements are limited to three minutes per speaker. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to council? No? Okay. Is there anyone on the phone who would like to speak to council? You can press star six to unmute. All right. Well, there being no further business, we are adjourned. Thank you.